Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Dennis Theater Foundation, the Mount Lebanon Public Library, and the League of Women Voters of Greater Pittsburgh, welcome to the Mount Lebanon School Board Candidates Forum. My name is John Delano. With a few years out for school, I have lived in Mount Lebanon since 1958. I attended Markham, Mellon, and graduated from the Mount Lebanon High School. Those are my qualifications for moderating this program this evening. I'm also the new president of the Dennis Theater Foundation, a group of citizens that purchased the old Dennis Theater. With your help, we are now seeking to raise the dollars to reopen the Dennis as a community theater and cultural arts center for events in person, just like this one. We are making history tonight in Mount Lebanon. Over 500 citizens have signed up to watch this on Zoom, and others can watch the event live on the Dennis Facebook page. I have never heard of a Candidates Forum attracting that many attendees in Mount Lebanon. This record is a credit to all of you who are watching and to our candidates. All 10 agreed to participate, and I thank each of them. I thank them for running for school board, perhaps the most thankless elected position in America today. These 10 deserve our thanks just for stepping forward. We had nearly 100 questions submitted by those who registered. Given the size of this panel, the good news is that most of those questions touched on the same subjects. With a strict 60-second time limit on answers, we will ask as many of these questions as we can. Finally, a short time ago, we pulled names out of the hat to determine the order, and now I will begin. Our first question goes to, starts with Kim Lackner-Morrow. The questions will go through everybody on the panel. So, let us begin. Kim? Same question to all the candidates. We've seen a lot of lawn signs, flyers, and plenty of social media buzz about this race for school board. So we're asking each of the candidates, who are you and why are you running for school board? Kim, you want to start?
Sure. Thank you, John, for having us this evening in the Dennis Theater. I am running for school board. As a parent, as an educator, finishing my 16th year teaching high school history, English, and special education. I am a Mount Lebanon graduate, 2001. I value this community. I love this community. I want to raise my family in this community. I feel that the schools are the central component of why families move here, and I feel that in order to get this district back on the path of excellence, that we need to have some change in leadership. Some of the things that occurred over the summer, the lack of choice that was given to parents in the fall to have their students, to have their children return to school, really motivated me to run for school board. And I still feel like I've met a wonderful slate and have been able to meet them organically. We've come together with the same common goals and the same mission. And I feel that we have a strong public sector, private sector experience to get this board back on track and continue that path of excellence.
Time is up.
Thank you, Kim. That's special kudos. Special kudos for those who finished their comments before 60 seconds. That's appreciated.
By my best.
Leslie Long, same question. Who are you and why are you running for school board?
Hi, John. Thank you very much. My name is Leslie Long. I am running for school board because I love Mount Lebanon. I'm a mom and a teacher, and I commit to listen to all of the stakeholders in the community, something that I don't feel has happened this past year. Thank you.
Thank you, Wesley. Our same question goes to Jim Schoyer. Schoyerman, sorry, Jim. Who are you and why are you running?
Thank you, John, and thank you to the Dennis Theater Foundation and the other organizations that have sponsored this event. I am a former teacher. I taught high school and college. I am an attorney with 31 years' experience at the law. I am now semi-retired. I have watched or attended every Mount Lebanon School Board meeting since January of 2018. I have read the district's policies, budget documents, other related and important documents to educate myself on the issues and challenges that this school district has faced recently and is facing in the future. Education is transformational. We've all seen it in so many of our family, friends, neighbors, those who receive a good education on the one hand, and those who do not receive a good education on the other hand. And we all know that the Mount Lebanon schools-
Time is up.
Thank you, Jim. The next panelist to answer the same question is Matthew Hackworth. Matthew, who are you and why are you running for school board?
Well, apparently, I'm the mystery candidate since folks haven't heard a lot from me. But my background is in consulting, and I've worked with business and government folks extensively for the past 20 years. I also have a commitment and an interest in education. My brother is an elementary educator. My wife is an elementary educator. My father served on the local school board in my hometown for over 30 years. So I have a passion to recognizing that education is essential and a life-changing opportunity. Also, I think I bring what's essential to this position. I bring competency and an ability to get along well with others and work with others in a constructive fashion. I also bring fiscal responsibility. As you can see, I haven't had a haircut in over a year, so I know how to pinch a penny, and I think that will be essential as we move forward. And also, a commitment to educational excellence, which has to be foremost for all of our students. And I think that's really what I want to make sure Mount Lebanon continues to represent in an increasingly competitive environment and as we seek to restore our students to school as much as possible in person.
Thank you, Matthew. Appreciate it. Same question. Anna Maria Johnson, who are you and why are you running for school board?
Thank you, Mr. Delano and the League of Women Voters, the Dennis Theater, and the Mount Lebanon Public Library for this forum. My name is Anna Maria Johnson. I have been a resident of Mount Lebanon since moving here with my parents as I entered 4th grade at Howe Elementary and went through Mellon Middle School and am a graduate of Mount Lebanon from the class of '86. I am a product of our outstanding public schools, and I bring to the board my life experiences and a new perspective to the board with my education and service background. I'm an active volunteer in my children's schools and my community, and I believe it's my responsibility and obligation to give back with my time, hard work, and experience. My skills, leadership, and the experiences that I have lived will enhance my service to our district. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna Maria. Appreciate it. Next, same question to Claire Guth. Who are you and why are you running for school board?
Thank you to everyone who's worked so hard to make this evening possible. I'm running for school director because I have extensive experience governing organizations and institutions, public financial oversight, a career in education and public policy, and the knowledge to build an inclusive school district to best prepare youth for post-secondary success. I'm a thought partner of PDE, the Department of Labor and Industry, and I'm leading the University of Pittsburgh's efforts to expand workforce programming to connect youth with the careers of the future. I previously ran an advanced manufacturing initiative of Pitt Swanson School of Engineering in Homewood, and I'm currently working to enhance dual enrollment at Pitt's Digital Inclusion Center in the Hill District to prepare youth for the increasingly digitalization of the workforce. I have a master's in public policy management. I'm currently getting my PhD, looking at the future of education and work. My experience as an academic and a practitioner and a mother of three will help guide our district to a more equitable future.
Thank you, Claire. The next panelist, same question. Erin Gensel, who are you and why are you running for school board?
Thank you, John, and all sponsors. I grew up in a working-class home, a coal miner's daughter, and my parents always emphasized the importance of a good education. I always loved school and had many excellent teachers that influenced me to become one myself. Over the last 22 years, I have seen the educational process from many different angles, from early childhood to college. I've also seen the education of the whole child, from the tennis court to the school newspaper office to the classroom. Teacher, coach, mentor, college admissions officer, an executive board member times two, and a mom. I'm running for school director because I am passionate about education and volunteerism, and this is the perfect way for me to serve our community.
Erin, thank you very much. Peter Darcy, same question. Who are you and why are you running for school board?
Good evening. Thank you, John. Peter Darcy, you know, it's a, it's a simple, it's a simple question and a simple answer. It starts with just the love of this community. I'm a parent of three boys. We made a conscious decision to choose to live in Mount Lebanon. I was a Navy kid growing up, so we moved around a lot. But my wife's family, the ties are deep to this community. And I think, I believe, at the core of any great community is the school. And I was the product of public school education. I believe to the core in what public school education can do. But to answer your question, John, it's because of the love of this community, the people that make up this community, and the schools. And anytime you look at the crux of a school, it's the teachers. We wouldn't be here if it wasn't for the teachers. So thank you for this opportunity this evening, and I look forward to the discussion.
Peter, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Chris Lust, who are you and why are you running for school board?
Hi, John. Thank you for having me tonight. I really appreciate it. I too are a graduate of Markham Elementary School. I was born and raised here in Mount Lebanon, graduated in 1992, went to Boston College, moved away, had a career in the financial markets in New York City. Had four kids. I have a 3rd grader, two 4th graders, and a 5th grader. We moved up to Connecticut outside of the city, and then made a conscious decision to move back to Mount Lebanon because of this community, because of the education, because of the people, because of my family. All of those mean a lot to me, and I know the education I got here was extremely important. We moved back, went through this past year, started to spend time analyzing, uncovering, and looking at the board, the administration, some of the things that were going on in the school. And when I did that research and understand the lack of transparency, the lack of leadership, the lack of communication, the lack of understanding from a financial and fiscal responsibility standpoint, I decided I had to run. I didn't want to leave this community. I want to stay here and raise my kids here.
Time is up.
That's why I jumped in.
Thank you, Chris. And the last of our candidates on the panel, Andrew Freeman. Andrew, who are you and why are you running for the school board?
Thanks, John. I appreciate the Dennis Theater Foundation, League of Women Voters, and Mount Lebanon Public Library for sponsoring tonight's forum. I'm excited for tonight to really talk a little bit about who I am. I'm excited that we have a full house here, including the four from the Friends of Libo Slate that joined us after the fundraiser with Devon Robinson. Now, I'm a graduate of Mount Lebanon. I'm a byproduct of the excellent education that Mount Lebanon afforded me, which allowed me to ultimately matriculate over to the University of Pittsburgh, where I studied engineering, and currently today serve as a director of process improvement at Wesco Distribution. All of those things really are skill sets that I believe are, make a good school director and ultimately things that I want to bring to the board. We're in a situation where having a lean-thinking, process-minded, objective, and really cool, calm head is an important quality of a school director, something that I am proud about and proud that I bring to the position now and something I would love-
Time is up.
-to the future as well.
Thank you, Andrew. Appreciate that. Well, as I mentioned earlier, we have had lots and lots of questions, and I want to get right to one of those that was really front and center. We had several questions that many people repeated over and over. So let's get to an issue that a lot of you who are watching tonight have asked us. COVID and the opening and closing of our schools. Now, you can talk about the past if you want, but let's talk future too. So let me ask this question. If we face a similar high numbers of COVID-like cases in the future, when you're on the school board, what criteria would you use to determine whether our schools are open or closed to in-person learning? We're going to start this round of questions with Leslie Long. Leslie?
Hi there. Well, I think the most important thing is to listen to your constituents. Over 77% of the families in town were surveyed, said they wanted their kids to be back in school, yet that didn't happen. Clearly, we need to do it safely. We need to follow all guidelines by the county and follow all mitigation recommendations. But we need to give families a choice, and that choice was taken away. I think the number-one priority should be to get the students back in the buildings for in-person learning. It's where the kids belong. It's where they learn best. And that's where you get your best instruction. I think, you know, again, choice is the most important thing for the Mount Lebanon students, taught by the Mount Lebanon teachers, because they're amazing.
Thank you very much, Leslie. Jim Schoyerman, same question. What criteria would you use in determining whether schools are open or closed?
John, there are three criteria that I think that we should have used in this past year and that I would use or recommend that we use next year if we are unfortunate enough to be facing COVID again. Number one, physical health and safety. Number two, emotional and social well-being of the children. And number three, what are the academic consequences of any instructional model that is chosen? Guess what? Upper St. Clair used those three criteria. They had their children back in school more than we did. They had them in school more consistently than we did, and they had no greater incidence of COVID than we did. Our approach was scattershot, non-strategic, shoot-from-the-hip. We can do a lot better, and if I'm on the board, I will urge us to use those three criteria, which, by the way, are in our strategic plan. We just need to apply them.
Thank you, Jim. Matthew Hackworth, the same question. What criteria would you use with respect to opening or closing our schools?
I think it's important to recognize what the science actually told us during this past year. The incidence of transmission was low amongst our youngest cohorts of students, and there was the opportunity for them to have been in school more than they were without promoting a significant health consequence to them. And I think, as Jim noted there, you do need to balance the risk of health risks in terms of COVID transmission with the other losses that are really truly going to take place for the students. So the criteria that I would use are yes, there's still public health and safety that needs to be kept in mind here. But as others have noted, other school districts were able to keep their students home. And as a colleague of mine in a district far south of here noted, you know, they kept their students in school, and, you know, none of them had a serious consequence in terms of their students. So I think we really need to take a balanced consideration of student health, welfare, and education and not just reflexively shut down out of fear.
Time is up.
Thank you, Matthew. Anna Maria Johnson, same question. What criteria would you use?
Thank you, John. So I would look to follow the CDC and state health guidelines as well as a combination with local conditions for transmission to see what our transmission rates are and how full are our hospitals, depending on what the issue is, if it's a virus again or if it's just something else. I would like to make sure that we have a safe delivery of education, and we are looking at the health and welfare of our children and making sure that if they are in school and we're able to do that, that would be wonderful, but to make sure that they are at the highest safety rates. We also need to, I would believe, in doing that and keeping them home, if we had to, again, utilize our CLA learning quickly as we did in the past to have schools open, whether virtual or in person. And also, as we've gone through this process this year with the board, to make sure that our board is not put in a position to manage a crisis again but to govern through the crisis. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire, or Anna Maria. Claire Guth, same question. What's your criteria for opening or closing our schools?
Thank you, John. Unfortunately, I'm not a public health expert, but I am a data scientist and I am a policy expert, and I'm a parent who wants to see the schools open but in a thoughtful and intentional and safe manner following CDC and PDE guidelines. Public education is a critical driver of economic mobility and the ultimate equalizer. But last spring, the ultimate equalizer was forced to move online, resulting in an uneven toll on academic achievement. But a lot of my research at Pitt is answering questions surrounding AI and online learning and how it could be compared with experiential learning in K-12 settings to address the problematic data surrounding equity in education and post-secondary success. While some children thrived at home, it's not ideal, especially for vulnerable populations. Some of the work I'm currently doing in this field is expanding digital inclusion for youth and dislocated workers in the Hill District to develop and deliver digital classes and experiential learning, working with local companies in tech and manufacturing to get real-world application. So I think, again, like, looking at the CDC and PDE guidelines, and again, you know, the board was forced to go into a management position this year when it really is a governing board.
Time is up.
Thank you very much, Claire. Erin Gensel, what criteria would you use?
Hi there. First of all, I would echo the sentiments of Claire and Anna Maria that our board was forced into a managing position this year. They are supposed to be a governing board. So I would very much hope, first of all, I hope that COVID is waning by then, but I'd also very much hope if something else does come up that we use data and science. The more we know, the better we do, and we learned a lot this year, you know, through everything we went through. I think we can take all of that, and if we are faced with something like this again, we certainly have the technology to help us out, but we very much hope that we are in school five full days in the fall. But if something would come up, we'd hope to follow PDE guidelines, county guidelines, and not be forced into a managing position like the board was this year.
Erin, thank you. Peter Darcy, same question. What criteria would you use to open or close our schools for in-person learning?
John, you know, I think when you look at what happened this past year with the pandemic, really, the last year and a half, it exposed a breakdown in leadership. And the reality is, we did not have a plan when we were to open the schools in August. And that does fall on the board. The board is a governing body, and the board should step in if it's not getting the information or not getting the plan from its administration. So the responsibility does lie with the board. With respect to what I would look at, well, I would certainly look at the PDE guidelines, which, which the county committee said, consult with your local health department, which said, in a structured classroom environment, the risk of spread for COVID is low. I would also tap into, you had an epidemiologist on your board, and oftentimes, I found as a parent, he was being tabled. His recommendations were being tabled. So what we saw was a lack of a plan, and then we saw a lack of infighting. So it's not about the data, because that-
Time is up.
Peter, thank you very much. Chris Lust, same question. What's your criteria for opening or closing schools?
Hey, John, thank you. So in my career, I've been on many boards. I've reported to boards. And the role of the board is to be experts in particular areas of competency and subject matter. And you rely on those boards to step in when there are problems to be solved, when you need critical thinkers. That's the same role of this school board, and that's why myself, along with my slate, is running, because we're going to bring that leadership, bring that critical thinking, and bring that problem-solving to the board that was lacking over this last year. What would I do? First, I would bring in those experts, the American Academy of Pediatrics. I would focus on how they look at it, which is strongly bringing kids back into school, in-person learning. It's extremely important for all kids. That's what I'd focus on.
Thank you very much, Chris. Andrew Freeman, same question. What criteria would you use to open or close schools?
Excellent question, John. I think squarely, this question really speaks to who are we going to trust? And when I think about what we need to be doing, particularly on the board, it's trusting the people that know best. When it comes to the criteria, we should definitely be using the guidelines that are outlined by the PDE as well as the CDC and our local public health experts to really guide and determine when it is that we should or should not be using particular metrics to open and close the school. With that being said, there are a variety of opinions, and there are a variety of agencies that'll provide even differing views in the public health sphere. So how do you know where to go to? At the end of the day, I think it's important and incumbent on the team of 10, and that's the nine board members in addition with the superintendent, really coming together to understand what is the best path forward as a result of the fact that the superintendent really is there to manage, you know, the ministry, excuse me, the district, while the board is there to govern. And governance does not mean, even with the skill set, it does not mean-
Time is up.
-into the management aspects of the district.
Andrew, thank you very much. The last on this round of questions, same question goes to Kim Lackner-Morrow. Kim, what are your criteria for opening or closing schools?
Hi, John. Thank you. Like all my slate members really echoed, I believe I am the only current educator that has been in a school building out of all of the candidates that are on here, teaching, being in the school building five days a week this year, teaching in mainly the hybrid format. We are now back five days a week. The bottom line is, is that the community, 80% of the community wanted the kids back in school, and this board did not listen. The managing board, in my opinion, didn't do a very good job of looking at the administration, the school board, the union president, the solicitor, the HR director, to come to, come together over the summer, make a plan, execute the plan. It did not happen, and as a result, we suffered. CDC guidelines, the CDC and the APA said almost the entire school year that students should be back in the building. All teachers that want a vaccination have already been given the opportunity to be vaccinated. The majority of high school students have now opportunity to be vaccinated. And so I think that we can return to school five days a week and have the option for the Cyber Learning Academy if-
Thank you, Wesley. A number of you have already touched on this, but this is a natural question that seems to follow from that last discussion that we've had, and it was a very frequent question that was submitted to us. This goes directly to your role if you're elected to the school board. Who makes the decisions in Mount Lebanon? Who runs this school district? The school board or the superintendent? More specifically, in your view, what is the proper relationship between the two? Jim Schoyer, Schoyerman, you get that first question.
Thank you, John. The relationship between the school board and the superintendent is outlined in the Pennsylvania School Code and in our own school board policies. There are several policies that address that. The school board has two principal roles. One is policymaking, a legislative role, as it's often called. And secondly, it's oversight of the administration. Too often, our school board has ignored its own policies, has failed to understand its own policies, and has failed to require the superintendent and other administrators to adhere to those policies. So what we saw in COVID was a lot of, as I mentioned before, shoot-from-the-hip, ad hoc, non-strategic activity by the board and by the administration because they didn't follow their own policies. If we get a clear understanding of the policies, a lot good follows from that. If the policies are unclear, they have to be amended. Thank you.
Jim, thank you, sir, very much. Matthew Hackworth, the same question. What's the proper relationship between the superintendent and the board?
Yeah, I think, as has been stated by others, obviously, the responsibility there is predominantly a policy one, and it is also an oversight function. I think the board needs to work in concert with the administration. If we're put in a position where the board doesn't, isn't somehow perceived as though it should engage with the administration, I'm not sure what that oversight really looks like, other than preserving the board only a nuclear option of replacing the administration, which is a last resort that nobody would want to have to pursue. So I think constructive engagement needs to be an aspect of oversight that the board participates in. And obviously, policymaking and coming to agreement on what the policies are that moves the district forward in the best fashion possible is an essential element of the board's function and the relationship to the administration. Thanks.
Thank you, Matthew. Anna Maria Johnson, same question. The proper relationship between the board and the superintendent?
Thank you. Well, to go back to your question, the school board does not run the district. We make sure that it is run well by the superintendent and the administration. By looking at past practices and history, what is working, the future, to set up fiscally, to make sure we have the correct and best personnel in place, focus on school student achievement, and actions, making collective decisions as a team of 10. And we need to advocate, lead, plan, evaluate, and communicate. The superintendent, it is our role to govern the decisions that he is making for employee evaluations and hiring, the day-to-day running of the district. He does create the board agenda, works with our board president, and he oversees the entire district as the CEO of educational programs, spending, staff, and facilities. And we need to work in concert to make sure that we are understanding those agenda items that he is looking over and his role overall, and how he is driving that in the district. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna Maria. Claire Guth, same question. Proper relationships here.
New elections have as many consequences for a region as school boards do. This election will affect the education of our youth, but it will also affect the economic development of our region. It will determine the tone and trajectory of Mount Lebanon for the next five, 10, even 20 years. You're electing people who will set the vision and the goals of the district, approve the budget, hire the superintendent, and measure their success in key performance indicating. Set the tax rate, manage collective bargaining, and prioritize infrastructure and adopt the curriculum. This is why Andrew, Anna Maria, Erin, and I are running for school director. We have the temperament and the experience necessary to be a team of 10 and bring our community together to collectively move forward. The board is supposed to have a unified vision in the district, but this past year has been incredibly contentious and difficult for people like me who value integrity and leadership. We desperately need to elect leaders who are able to repair the social fabric of our region.
Claire, thank you. Erin Gensel, the question again is, what is the proper relationship between the superintendent and the school board?
Well, you know, I think others have touched upon the actual roles, the school board adopting policies, setting vision and goals, hiring the superintendent, overseeing them, adopting and approving the budget, even approving textbooks. But the superintendent and the school board are a team of 10 and should be treated that way. There should be collaboration and strong communication between them. If there are clear expectations from the board, I think the superintendent can be very successful. It's sort of similar to hiring teachers. You hire them, you know, the district is making an investment in them, and they need to make a good faith effort to help them be successful. So, you know, the role of the board is to ensure that the district certainly is responsive to the values and beliefs and priorities of the community. But I think communication is something that could be stronger between the superintendent and the board. The more they collaborate and speak to one another, the better.
Erin, thank you very much. Peter Darcy, the same question. What is the proper relationship between the board and the superintendent?
So I think the three critical areas that a board gets involved in, oversight, governance, and, and policy or curriculum development. Let me be very clear. I fundamentally disagree that a board, in this case, a board of nine, that the superintendent is the 10th board member. I think that is a lot of the problem that we found ourselves in this year. The board's responsibility is to ask critical questions, is to challenge, to ensure that the recommendations that are coming from the superintendent and the superintendent's team are the right for, right, right ones for the district. We saw on big issues, we saw a lot of nine-zero votes on stuff that is highly consequential to, to the parents and students in our, in our community. So I don't, I do not subscribe to the superintendent is the 10th board member. I think that creates a coziness that, that is improper, and it, and it compromises the board's ability to be independent and to challenge assumptions that are coming from the district. You do that because you have a fiduciary
Time is up.
community.
Thank you, Peter. Chris Lust, same question. The proper relationship?
Yes, I'm going to echo Peter's comments. This board is elected by this community, and we stand as a representative to that community, and we need to look out for the interest of all community members and all stakeholders. That's how the board governs. The superintendent works for the board. They're not a 10th member. You have to hold them accountable. You have to set policy. When you set policy, you have to have plans. You have to understand those plans. You have to execute those plans. You have to then review the results of those plans that you executed. Planning in this district did not happen this year. The next thing you need to do, you must hold the administration accountable. It didn't happen this year at all. You need to know what questions to ask. You need to understand detail, fiduciary responsibilities, fiscal responsibilities, curriculum responsibilities, board responsibilities. Those aren't happening. What also has to happen is the board needs to work with the administration and the teachers. There needs to be a clear communication line between all three of those parts.
Time is up.
Chris, thank you very much, sir. Andrew Freeman, what is the proper relationship between the board and the school board? Obviously, the school board and the superintendent. Go ahead.
Hey, thanks for the question, John. When I think about the relationship between the board and the superintendent, I think about collaboration and not combativeness. And when we think about a team, whether, whether or not that one individual or multiple individuals reports up to a boss, you still have to work in a collaborative and team environment. So I am of the impression and the belief that the board, along with the superintendent, is a team of 10. We have to collaborate in order to, to address the key challenges of the district. And we have to work in a manner that allows us to be respectful, ensure that we have the effective leadership that we need and transparent leadership. And ultimately, we're addressing the key stakeholder issues. That's students, that's parents, that's teacher as well, and administrators as well. So holistically, the role of the board, yes. Is it about setting policy? Absolutely. Is it about ensuring that we're reviewing curriculums? Absolutely. Is it about having a firm budget that's in place? Absolutely, and approving that budget.
Time is up.
But all of those things matter, but it's about collaboration, not combativeness.
Andrew, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Same question to Kim Lackner-Morrow. Kim?
Okay, there's something on the screen, so I wasn't sure if I should be touching that or not. I'm actually going to kind of disagree with what, with what Andrew just said about that this is a team of 10. I feel like you have the school board that, again, is that governing board, has that oversight and the policymaking, and that the superintendent should not be the 10th board member. This is not how that relationship should really work. And so, like echoing all of my slate members here, is that we should be listening to the community. There should not be inner fighting within the board. There should not be political agendas. We should be doing what's most important and what is best for the kids. And I feel like this year, that communication, to communicate effectively between the superintendent, the teachers, the board, we had a complete breakdown. We shouldn't be having nine-o votes. There should be healthy discussion where you can agree to disagree and discuss all of those issues regarding policy and curriculum and CBA and all of these different elements that I feel and that my, that my slate members feel didn't happen this year. So we feel that that breakdown in leadership was really exposed through COVID, and that there needs to be significant changes to this dynamic.
Time is up.
Thank you, Kim. Leslie Long, the last of the panelists on this question. What is the proper relationship between the board and the superintendent?
I'm going to reiterate what my team has said, that the function of the board is to provide oversight and governance, and that it is not a team of 10. What I think was really missing this past year that we all witnessed was a lack of respect, a lack, lack of respect for one another, a lack of respect toward the superintendent and vice versa, and a lack of respect for the community. When the community spoke, they did not listen. When the administration gave recommendations, they did not listen. I think that there were, you know, I think the most important thing to do is to ask the question, how does this advance the students? And if it doesn't, if it's another, another agenda, then we're not going to go down that road. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. Appreciate it. Here's a question we got a lot of, lot of folks asked about, and it's really about the budget. So panelists, candidates, is this district going bankrupt? Are we facing a fiscal crisis with never-ending school property tax hikes? How would you balance the budget without raising taxes or cutting programs? And we begin with Matthew Hackworth on this round of questions. The budget. Matthew?
Thanks, John. Is it a crisis? Are we going bankrupt? No, unfortunately, the reality is that the district can continue to raise taxes, and we'll be able to meet its obligations that way. But that's a difficult reality. And again, the truth is that we're in a competitive environment where people will look at our community and look at the tax rate and say, you know, should I be headed to Mount Lebanon? The schools are good there, but I could head somewhere else where the taxes are a heck of a lot lower. Or what about our community members who, during a period of reassessment, are facing tax bills that make them start to question whether they can continue to live in the community that they've grown up in and raised their children in? I think we are going to have to look seriously at what the budget is going to entail here. Obviously, there's a significant, the bulk of the budget is related to staffing. And if you lock in a rate of increase for salaries there, you're going to be locking yourself into tax increases that are substantial. I think we do have to pinch pennies where we can, where there are discretionary expenditures that can be delayed, deferred, or reduced. Maybe we don't need the newest track every
Time is up.
few years, and we should consider those opportunities as well for fiscal responsibility.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anna Maria Johnson, again, do we have a budget crisis? And can we resolve it without raising taxes or cutting programs?
To your question, yes, we have several ideas for budget recovery. One, I know our budget is labor-driven, and it may be something that we need to look at the healthcare costs, which have gone up 3% year-over-year for the past 10 years, although this year it did go down 5%. But 79% of our budget is labor-driven with salary and benefits. And we must keep our district's more valuable, most valuable asset, which is our teachers. So there's not a lot that we can change there. However, there are line items that we need to look at as line items over year-over-year to compare and see what it is and where we can create some more revenue. We would like to, one label will obviously serve with fidelity and integrity to our community and their hard-earned tax dollars. We're not an outlier with other districts in comparison to us. 75% of Pennsylvania school districts are raising taxes this year for financial recovery from COVID.
Thank you, Anna Maria. Appreciate that. Claire Guth, same question.
Thank you. The Mount Lebanon School District is not unique. Every single school district in the United States is going through the same budgeting process right now. 68% of school districts in Pennsylvania are dipping into their fund balance. It's part of financial recovery from COVID. Recession, such as the one that happened in 2008, forces public entities to rely on their fund balance or cut programs. I have significant experience in public sector finance and have personally received over $1.5 million of PDE, LNI, and foundational grants. I sit on numerous governing and advisory boards, including Pittsburgh Public Schools Career and Technical Education, which oversees career and technical education for the second-largest school district in the state. And because a quality of education for children largely is based on their zip code, I'm on the board of Pittsburgh Urban Initiative, which is a program of the Urban Redevelopment Authority that distributes new market tax credits from the U.S. Department of Treasury to blighted neighborhoods in our region to spur economic growth and give kids a chance. And I'm also on the managing board of Pittsburgh Prototype that oversees a lot of institutional public funding. So I have this lens to govern with, and I think that's an important thing to hold people accountable for.
Claire, thank you very much. Erin Gensel, same question. Budget.
Hi, so I think, you know, we're lucky in Mount Lebanon for many reasons. We're lucky that we can use the available tools we have, responsible use of fund balance to avoid program cuts and layoffs. It's something that we can discuss as a community, but we haven't had to do that yet, and that's a good thing. Another thing to keep in mind that's different from what am I, some, different from what some of my teammates have said, is that the GOP state legislature has repeatedly rejected Tom Wolf's proposals to fairly and adequately fund public education. So that's a big problem. We're not getting the funds that we need. And this has been happening over the past 11 years. Our team is really focused on responsible recovery. This doesn't only relate to academics, social and emotional well-being, but certainly financial. To a multi-year financial recovery plan that is transparent
Time is up.
of our students and community.
Erin, thank you very much. Peter Darcy, we have a budget crisis. What are we going to do about it?
Guys, the reality is, we do have a budget crisis. And this is, these are moments that matter. Right now, it is to acknowledge that we have a budget crisis. There's tapping into your fund balance, and then there's tapping into your fund balance to the tune of about $6 million in the last two years, and then proposing over the next five years, tapping into your fund balance to the tune of $7 to $12 million. That's your rainy day fund. So, and there's a lot of uncertainty going forward. And so we, we are on a trajectory where if, if we don't contain cost, we will be insolvent. And, and this is, this is leadership to say, let's address this today, than to find ourselves upside down five years from now. Because I think what you can do today and not touch any, any of your cuts into the classroom is to look at, how are you spending right now? You have about $1 million in IT spend. Where is that going? Why is the board not asking those questions? You spent about a tune of about $300,000 on a software program for teachers, ingenuity. But because of your failure with those teachers, it's shelved. That's $300,000 that could save our budget.
Thank you, Peter. Chris Lust, the same question. Do we have a budget crisis? Can we balance budgets without raising taxes?
So unfortunately, the answer is yes, we absolutely have a budget crisis. We've raised taxes in this town eight of the last 12, 12 years. We are proposing to raise taxes the maximum legal allowable limit, according to the Act One. So we don't have unlimited taxing authority. That's, that's, that's a really important level that we don't have, right? We can only raise them to the Act One level. We're proposing to do that every year for the next five years. Why? Because we have a structural deficit. We've had a structural deficit for two years, and we're going to have it for the next five years. What does structural deficit mean? It means that it's not, it doesn't matter whether the economy is good or bad. This deficit, this structural issue that we have, is not related to COVID. It's related to poor management and understanding of how budgets work. It's really important for us as a board to come in and look at this now. Because if we wait five years, we will have a negative fund balance. We won't be able to refinance our bonds. We won't be able to raise taxes anymore, and we'll be in a much different situation than where we are now. And yes, we will be going insolvent.
Time is up.
Chris, thank you very much. Appreciate it. Andrew Freeman, same question. Do we have a budget crisis? What are you going to do about it, if we do?
So thanks, thanks for the question, John. When I think about the budget, there really are three primary revenue streams that the district has at its disposal. Taxes is certainly one, interest income is the other, and the last really is from state and federal funding. Now, Erin talked specifically about the challenges related to the state and federal funding. And I specifically want to look at, what is it that is happening from an interest income perspective? The district's funds are for the public good. They're for the good of our students. They're for the good of our community. And as a result, the goal and objective is not to turn a profit. The goal and objective is to be strong fiduciary stewards of our funds to ensure that the cash is available for use for programming for our kids. Now, with that being said, you know, the district really only has an opportunity to really invest in CDs and savings bonds, all that are yielding near-zero interest rates today. So if we have a revenue issue, and we need to address the revenue and increase it, it's going to be through taxes. That really is the primary handle
Time is up.
that the district has at its disposal.
Andrew, thank you very much, sir. Appreciate it. Same question. Kim Lackner-Morrow. The budget crisis, is there one?
Hello, yes, there is. As my slate members just stated all of those, those facts for you, to reiterate those, they are correct. So we were unfortunately put in this difficult situation prior to COVID. So this has been a few years coming with the structural deficit and poor management. We're looking at now, you know, the other individuals have talked about, you know, the state and the federal funding that we're receiving. And, you know, unfortunately, we're choosing to use the minimum percentage for learning loss and instead use the rest of those funds to help balance our budget, because we're pooling from our fund balance and filling a gap, trying to fix this deficit. Like everyone stated, we're raising taxes the next five years. Max level, we're raising the taxes the last eight of 12 years, and we are on a path, unfortunately, to bankruptcy if we don't get this thing under control. So we're going to have to look at reducing some expenses that are non-labor-related. We do not want to cut programs. I am a teacher that has been furloughed three times. The last thing I want to see is anyone being cut or programs being lost, because the kids are the most important thing, and the education. But we're going to have to get creative with things, because if we continue on this path, it will be an issue.
Thank you very much, Kim. Appreciate it. Leslie Long, same question. Budget.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity. I agree with the three members of my team, Chris, Pete, and Kim. This is a, this is a crisis, as they all outlined. But the board put us in this difficult position. The teachers in this district are our greatest asset, and as parents, we don't want to cut teachers or programs. But this board decided to But this board decided to dissolve the budget committee. And, um, now we have this issue facing us where taxes are going to be raised for the next five years at the max legal allowable rate. And we can't go any more than that. We can't raise them any more than what they are saying we, what they are promoting. So we are in a budget crisis, but I do think that there's hope and that we can, um, can
Leslie, thank you very much. The last of our panelists on this round of questions, Jim Schreierman, budget crisis, is there one? What can you do about it?
John, we have a structural budget deficit, and it's not COVID related. And nobody on this call should say that it's COVID related. We started off the budget season this year, seven million dollars deficit. Only one million of that was even indirectly tied to COVID. Next year at this time, we will start off with a three to four million dollar deficit. And even when your taxes go up to the nearly maximum amount this year and for the next three years, you're not going to plug that deficit by the administration's own projections. We are simply going to make that left deficit less bad. So, uh, the administration's only plan to this point is to draw money out of the reserve fund. That's a fantasy. We are currently at the six percent that the bond rating agencies require to pull two or three million dollars out of that to cover operating costs next year would crash our bond rating.
Jim, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Our next topic was again, I mean, so many of our questions, we had so many in the same general area. This one is a question that we've heard, I think, a lot about. What does DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion? What does that mean to you personally, candidates? And what should it mean for the school district and our curriculum? DEI, diversity, equity, and inclusion. Anna Maria Johnson, we start with you on this round.
Thank you. So one of the reasons I did decide to run for school director is based on diversity, equity, and inclusion. Uh, we need to start looking into our school district, um, for finding more diversity in our education, our curriculum, our instructors, um, and welcoming our students who are diverse. And that diversity includes not only race, but neurologically challenged children as well as our LGBTQ community and offering them a safe space to be educated in. Equity is very important to me as well. It is the just and fair distribution of resources based on student need. And we need to define equity with inclusive conversations for all beyond basic non-discrimination systemic inequalities. Many of those inequalities have risen from March pandemic and exposed gaps in our education through our digital learning issues, pandemic stress, especially with our special needs students and families, as well as social and emotional learning. We need to address all of these issues.
Time is up.
Anna Maria, thank you. Claire Guth, same question. What does DEI mean to you personally? And what should it mean for the school district and its curriculum?
DEI means everything to me. It's in my heart. It's in my work, and it's my career. I have, um, you know, I support policies that improve outcomes for all students. And I will ensure that the district engages with all students and families and the community beyond in an equitable manner that supports all students and perspectives and people, no matter how diverse. That they're treated with the respect that all people deserve and are inclusively applied to all district actions. I will work to promote the emotional and physical well-being of our students as well as their creativity and critical thinking, while ensuring equity, encouraging progress, and maximizing achievement.
Thank you very much, Claire. Erin Gensel, what does DEI mean to you and what should it mean for the school district and curriculum?
So during my first teaching job twenty years ago, I participated in the selection process for our first directory, Director of Diversity and Inclusion. And, you know, it's so important to me. Here we are twenty years later, and there's a lot of work to do in this area. In both schools where I taught, DEI was always a part of the education of the whole student. We worked to ensure that all students were successful and also that all students honored the multiple perspectives provided by students with different backgrounds. And, you know, diversity does not mean just racial. It means socioeconomic diversity, neurodiversity. We want to make sure that all students are receiving, you know, the same resources, but equity is really about ensuring that all students have the tools and supports they need individually to achieve their highest potential. And I think success in this area really comes from education, exposure, and experience. I think we need to strive
Erin, thank you very much. Peter Darcy, same question. What does DEI mean to you personally? And what should it mean for the school district and curriculum?
Diversity means, I, I agree, diversity means everything. It's race, it's gender, it's sexual orientation, it's equality. It's your political persuasion, it's your natural origin. And it's, it's why I think our slate really believes that we focus on all students. We want all students. We are better when there is diversity of thought. I'll tell you one way you don't advance diversity, equity, and inclusion is by labeling. And this is one of those cases where I think we can learn as adults from our students. I think we're raising, and I think our teachers are doing an excellent job in terms of we're preparing our students to be good citizens and to be thoughtful. I see that in the discussions that I hear, um, you know, when we were in online setting. But we need to focus on all students. A good start is that we have a diversity, equity, and inclusion committee. But I think one of the things we must do as a district is also advance all of our committees so that we put real muscle into the committee structure, including the diversity, equity
Time is up.
Excuse me, DEI committee. Thank you.
Peter, thank you. Chris Lust, same question. DEI to you personally, and what should it mean for the district?
I think it's, I, I think it's incredibly important for all school districts, including Mount Lebanon. I think to Pete's point, diversity means race, gender, abilities, economic diversity. All of those are important. And I think when you look at the students, having equality and opportunity for all students so that they can thrive at their highest potential is critical as we go into the, the schools each year. I think one of the most important things that we, and I want to go back to the budget, which is none of these programs that we talk about here today can exist if we don't have the funds to provide for those. And so it's really important to understand this budget deficit that we have is critical. And it goes back to, we filled this budget gap with funds that we won't have available that we can use for diversity, equity, inclusion, and other opportunities that we have to advance all of our students across this community.
Thank you very much, Chris. Andrew Freeman, same question. DEI, what does it mean to you and what should it mean to our school district and curriculum?
Thanks, John, for the question. To me, diversity is everything. When I think about our strategic plan, uh, that the district has on its website, goal number four talks about creating an inclusive and welcoming environment. And that is one of the few things that when I, I was appointed to the board in October, I wanted to ensure we continue to promote and continue to advance. While serving on the DEI committee, uh, and ultimately as well, prior to being on the board, was selected to be a part of the DEI task force. It really was about ensuring that we have equity for all. Uh, and that means in all facets for all students. You know, I, I've been on the board for a short amount of time, and I got to tell you that, you know, some of the abuse, verbal abuse that I have received on the board, you know, even from audiences, is in direct conflict with what we teach our own students in our student handbook. If we want to be better, we have to be the example that we want for our kids. And I want to be that person that's on the board that promotes an inclusive and welcoming environment for all.
Thank you, Andrew. Kim Lackner Morrow, same question.
Thank you. Yeah, we, we have a DEI committee. I value the DEI committee. When I look at this, um, I, I go back to, to what I know and what I do daily. So as a special education teacher that teaches in a district that is very diverse racially and socio-economically, I feel that I have actual experience teaching these students of different backgrounds and seeing their needs daily. Which I think is important for putting things to practice. Um, I like to go back to equality where we have all diverse groups that need to be given the same resources and same opportunities. And that all people of abilities have a right to be respected and appreciated as valuable members of this community. I feel like Mount Lebanon does this. I feel like we always have room for improvement and we can maintain the DEI committee and value it. But like Chris stated, um, this needs to be funded. We have to have, we have to have finances to do these things. So, so we have committees that have been dissolved. And currently we have the DEI committee. If we want to keep it in existence and keep the resources there, then we need to have the funds to do so. So again, I think this is valuable. Conversations, continued conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Leslie Long, again, what does DEI mean to you and what should it mean for the district?
Hi, um, I believe, um, as well as my teammates believe that we have to remove the politics and ideology that are inherent in teaching diversity as a theory in a classroom discussion. Um, instead, I think we have to put kids in opportunities, um, where they can have truly diverse experiences, um, that aren't just, aren't limited in duration, but where they can actually establish connections over time. Not only with people of different races, but also different socioeconomic backgrounds. I think Mount Lebanon should be looked at as a leader, um, for guidance on how to incorporate diversity into our educational system and, um, how to put students first.
Thank you, Leslie. Jim Schreierman, same question. DEI.
John, John, I'm glad we're finally having as a community and school district a discussion and hopefully moving toward action on DEI issues. When my two children went through the schools and graduated in the two thousands, DEI was not on the agenda, and I'm glad to see we're breaking out of the bubble as it's often called. DEI in essence is essentially that personal traits that, um, an individual has no control over do not determine how that individual is treated either in hiring decisions in the classroom or in extracurricular activities. And of course, that's race, gender, and the whole host of, uh, personal traits that we are all very much aware of. At bottom, it means everybody is treated with equal dignity and respect. And it means that the school board and the administration exercise a great
Time is up.
A great deal of common sense in all DEI related matters.
Jim, thank you very much. The, uh, last panelist on this round of questions, same question. Matthew Hackworth, DEI, what does it mean to you and what should it mean for the district?
Thanks, Sean. What does it mean to me? Well, my experience has been growing up in Oakmont in the Pittsburgh area. And, you know, it's a sheltered existence, right? We shelter ourselves with people who are like us for so much of our time. In, in high school, we, we form our own cliques and in college, you stay within your bubble and in your communities. But, you know, my experience has also been one of growth, which is I've valued every opportunity to meet with diverse perspectives in my colleagues in a professional setting who come from different backgrounds. And what was most useful to me in, in having that ability was, you know, the, the experience and the values that my parents put into me and my community put into me, that we do need to understand others, to listen to others. And I think the community's been doing a great job here in Mount Lebanon. The diversity, equity, and inclusion efforts within the community have really been eye opening. And I really appreciate the work that's been done and can continue to be done, uh, within our community.
Matthew, thank you very much, sir. The next question is one that I think those with young children, uh, have been particularly interested in. And, uh, so let me run through the panel on this one. This might be a little quicker for us to get through. If so, we might get to another question. We'll see. Is Mount Lebanon stuck in the last century when it comes to early childhood education? Of the state's five hundred school districts, four hundred and twenty-eight of them offer full-day kindergarten. Yet Mount Lebanon is not one of them. So yes or no, do you support full-day kindergarten? And will you make it happen if you're elected? And we begin with Claire Guth. Claire?
I'm happy to start off this conversation as I have a rising kindergartner and a one who had kindergarten a couple of years ago. But I look at data, you know, empirical studies have noted that every publicly funded dollar in high-quality early childhood education can yield a four to six dollar return, reducing future costs for remedial education, health, social services, and the criminal justice system. In Mount Lebanon, it helps parents. It helps women who are disproportionately affected by the pandemic. But Mount Lebanon has an infrastructure issue, especially for a lot of, well, some of the, some of the smaller elementary schools. So we need to kind of address this in a creative and innovative way. And I, I commit to getting full-day kindergarten if I am elected.
Claire, thank you very much. Erin Gensel, same question. Full-day kindergarten, do you support it? Will you make it happen?
I absolutely support, support full-day kindergarten. Um, I think it's something that many, many people in our community would support. Our demographics are changing. We have more working parents now. And, um, even those who, who aren't working, um, I think would support this. I, you know, as Claire said, we do have some infrastructure problems. We, we can't build out here. We have to build up. So I would like to see a plan in place, um, an audit done to see what would need to be done to make full-day kindergarten happen. And I do look forward to that in the future.
Thank you, Erin. Peter Darcy, same question. Do you support full-day kindergarten in Mount Lebanon?
I do support full-day kindergarten. In fact, my oldest, uh, when we were living in Charlotte, had full-day kindergarten. And, um, there is, they, they are better prepared for, for the first grade. So how do you do that? And this goes back to our priorities. We have to prioritize. If this is something we want to prioritize as a community, then we need to prioritize it. And then we need to make sure that it has its proper place in the budget. It's not just as simple as saying we must have all-day kindergarten. Let's prioritize that because we have to balance it. But yes, to answer your question, for sure, my oldest benefited from it. The needs of, of families are changing in, in our community where you have two incomes. It all makes sense, and most importantly, makes sense because I do believe from personal experience, it prepares the child to be more successful in the first grade.
Thank you, Pete. Chris Lust, same question. Full-day kindergarten in Mount Lebanon?
Yes, when we moved back, uh, from Connecticut to, to Mount Lebanon, and we were fortunate enough to have my four kids go through St. Paul's Nursery School, uh, where my mom's taught for forty-seven years now. And when my oldest went off to kindergarten at Jefferson and realized that the kindergarten was a shorter day than the nursery school was providing, for me, that's where a change needed to happen. And so I'm, I'm full support of full-day kindergarten. But with that comes fiscal responsibility and understanding how to pay for that and understanding how that comes out of the budget. And again, that's where this team, myself and my other slatemates will step in and understand how to budget for that, do the analysis, understand where they fit into the buildings and where that can occur. And that's really critical to make it happen. And that's a big piece of it.
Chris, thank you. Andrew Freeman, full-day kindergarten?
I, I absolutely support full-day kindergarten. Being a, a working parent myself, uh, with my wife, um, I was actually surprised you haven't heard about two-year-old in the background. Because I'm sure he's going to be making some noise. But, uh, when it comes to full-day kindergarten, I think I bring a, a set of skills different from, uh, the rest of the folks on this panel. I'm an engineer by training. And so one of the key considerations for full-day kindergarten is ensuring that we have the space to do that. The infrastructure in place to make that a reality. That's something I can certainly assist with and certainly have experience navigating. So it's, it's a part of, uh, you know, one of the things that I can bring to the table. Full-day kindergarten also is an aspect of DEI. It's an equity conversation. So as a part of the DEI committee and, uh, the commitment to perform an equity audit, uh, an equity assessment of the district, this absolutely should be one of the considerations that's in there to ensure that we can ultimately provide the education we need and the support we need, uh, for all parents and households in Mount Lebanon.
Andrew, thank you very much. Kim Lackner Morrow, full-day kindergarten?
Oh, yes, I'm a huge proponent of full-day kindergarten. As I said, my, my older two have been attending a full-day kindergarten program that we have to pay for separately, uh, since both my husband and I work full-time. We can't send our kids to a half-day program. Um, I think you need to, I think you can have the best of both worlds in Mount Lebanon. I think you can actually still provide a choice for parents that want to continue with a half-day program, but also survey and provide the option for a full-day program. Um, I don't believe the community has been surveyed in close to ten years, asking if they want a full-day kindergarten program, nor have we looked at how, um, changing economics have occurred in this community with two full-time working parents. Um, many individuals in the district has claimed that there is no space and that we would have to renovate buildings. That's just untrue. Hoover is not nearly at max capacity. Neither is Markham. Neither is Foster. They are smaller buildings. You could be creative in your planning, have a lottery system. You could have, you could poll and see who wants it. Those kids could be driven by their parents to that program. If they want to do the full-day kindergarten, we could look at possibly doing some busing for those kids that want full-day
Time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Leslie Long, same question, full-day kindergarten, are you for it?
Hi there. Yes, I'm absolutely for full-day kindergarten. Kindergarten is a long time off for me. My oldest is a senior. But even when he was in kindergarten, he would come home and say they never even got to recess because they had to pack so much in such a short amount of time. Most of the kids back then, and I believe currently, attend enrichment programs after kindergarten, and I think, you know, a lot of parents in Mount Lebanon will do that. But I also think that speaks to the fact that parents would like their kids in kindergarten all day. And I also think that it will really help with the transition into first grade, because they go from two and a half hours of kindergarten to going all day the next year, not even having, you know, lunch and, and sometimes having to miss recess just to get through the curriculum. But I'm a full proponent of full-day kindergarten and choice. Some may not want it.
Leslie, thank you very much. Jim Schreierman, full-day kindergarten?
Yes, John, absolutely, and I've been campaigning on that issue for a couple of months. But as you've heard from other candidates, we need to get the budget issues right. We can't even afford the programs we are currently offering. So get the budget issues right and full-day kindergarten full speed ahead. Three advantages for full-day kindergarten. One, all the studies have shown that it is educationally beneficial for the child. Number two, it would make us more competitive with the surrounding districts that do offer full-day kindergarten. And number three, it's a matter of fundamental equity. We decided as a country and a, as a school district long ago, that the cost of public education would be shared by the community. But here, for parents who need full-day kindergarten and only get half-day, we make them pay $700 for the first child and less for the second child to go to an extended daycare program. That's inequitable. It hurts the families, especially who can
Time is up.
single moms and single dads.
Thank you, Jim. Matthew Hackworth, full-day kindergarten?
Yeah, I don't think I have a whole lot new to add to this. I think folks have made a lot of really good points. You got to have the budget to do this sort of thing. I really appreciate what Kim said as well, which is a survey would be useful as well to know how many folks and who wants this. I know my personal experience with our youngest, I don't think she would have benefited from full-day kindergarten. But there's a lot of folks who are also delaying and deferring kindergarten until their kids are a little bit older, in which case they kind of might want a full day and a little bit more meatier content. So being able to address those needs, all of those needs would be, would be good, but we have to have the resources to do so. And I think, as folks noted, and as the question presumes, we are in a time where there's a lot of dual working parents, and, you know, we don't need to impose an additional burden if we can avoid it, but we got to have the resources to do so.
Thank you very much, Matthew. The last panelist on this question, Anna Maria Johnson, full-day kindergarten?
Yes, thank you, John. That is also one of the reasons why I joined the school board race. I am in support of full-day kindergarten, and I feel it's one of the great inequities in Mount Lebanon. As family dynamics continue to change with parents who work, single parents and grandparents raising grandchildren, I would like an accurate study to show the need in once by parents, as well as an accurate cost to the capital budget due to our older elementary schools in need of possible renovation, which during this budget time, which we need to get under our belt, it will help to know exactly what that cost is going to be as we plan for the future.
Thank you very much, Anna Maria. With the panelists' permission, I'm going to ask one more question, and then we will have a one-minute wrap-up from each of the panelists. Obviously, I'm not getting through all the questions that people ask, but if we, I think this is an important question that we should ask before we go to your wrap-up. Many residents think that government decisions at all levels are made in the dark behind citizens' backs. In your view, is this a problem in Mount Lebanon? Please be specific. How would you improve communications and transparency between the school district, the superintendent, and the Mount Lebanon community? Erin Gensel, we start with you.
Well, transparency is something that our team cares very deeply about. I think it goes hand-in-hand with communication. Transparency builds trust and goodwill in the community. So there are several things that I think we need to do. I think, you know, in some ways, we have been kept in the dark on certain issues. We've seen the board be kept in the dark on certain things, and then also the community. This year, certainly, I think everybody can agree that more transparency would have been a good thing. I think we need easier access to information and online resources. A lot of people spoke about surveys with, with kindergarten, and I agree. I think we need to gain vibrant community feedback via online surveys and also leverage technology to disseminate meeting information and district goals. In terms of communication, as board members, we're really hoping to enact some new things like town halls in the summer when the board is in recess, and we can do that with four board members. And also getting back to technology, a district-wide monthly newsletter, and just adopting digital tools that allow for greater accessibility and open communication between administrators, the board, and the community.
Erin, thank you very much. Peter Darcy, the same question, communication transparency in this district?
I would add trust. I think if you incorporate trust, and you can accomplish the communication, the transparency, we've gone, we, we've advanced the ball in a significant manner. Take you back to August, where many in the community, myself, my family, were under the impression from some of the summer board sessions that we were going to be in a classroom environment come late August, September. And then, at the 11th hour, we failed to deliver that, and we went into a remote setting. And what really is, is difficult to stomach is the games, the lack of communication from the board and from the administration on why, and what our plan for it was going to be. You know, and then, as a parent, you send letters. I've never had an email responded to by a board member. That doesn't work to go advance communication.
Time is up.
Thank you, Pete. Chris Luff, same question, transparency and communication in the district, what would you do to improve it, if there's a problem?
Yes, I think it's, it definitely is an issue, and something needs to be addressed, and I pledge, and the rest of my slatemates pledge, pledge to be transparent and to include the community in, in all of our decisions, and understand what those decisions are and understand what questions need to be asked. I'm going to cite three different examples. First is the easers funding. The easer funding is the stimulus package that we received, $2.7 million from the government. There was zero, zero discussion with the community on how that was being used. The reason is, we needed it to fill our budget gap. That's why. That needs to happen. There's $1.7 million that was set aside for recovery, and it needs to be a conversation with this community. The second was the budget school board meeting. April 12th, there was a slide that was, showed the budget, and it included the fund balance, the ending fund balance. On April 19th, the ending fund balance, which shows the, the amount that's left in your savings account, was eliminated from the slide. Not a single board member asked a question or wanted to understand why
Time is up.
what was meant by it. The last thing?
Thank you very much. Your time's up. I'm sorry. Andrew Freeman, same question, transparency?
Thanks for your question again, John. It's, it's a very, very important question. And I, I know back in the summer when I was not on the board and was listening to board meetings, et cetera, you know, I had my concerns then, and when I was on the board and appointed in October, I had my concerns then, and I, I still have them now. Communication is the foundation that we, for, excuse me, communication is the foundation really just for building trust with the community. And if we don't get that right, we end up in situations like we've seen at board meetings, where folks who don't understand each other ultimately lash out at each other. I, I think Erin did a great job in terms of articulating some of the, the ways that I also support in terms of committing better communication and transparency. I will echo, though, that, you know, there already are improvements that are happening, and I'm happy that, you know, I've served a role in advocating for those, better use of our district site, putting the, the budget information online so folks have access to it, et cetera. So, you know, we're making small
Time is up.
to be better for the community, something
Thank you, Andrew. Thank you, Andrew. Kim Lackner-Morrow, same question, transparency, communications?
Thank you. So as an educator, yes, you know, effective communication is, is really everything. So transparency and trust did not occur this year. That did not happen on this board. Didn't happen between all the parties that were involved over the summer, as, as Pete addressed, between the superintendent, the school board, the union leadership, the HR director. We were told that we were going to go back to school and have a choice, and then we ended up not having that choice. Decisions should not be made behind closed doors in gentleman's agreements, where you come out and you have a nine-no vote on one of the most important decisions for families to return to school and have a choice if they wanted to go back. And that is, as, that's a result of political agendas over community needs, period. Not answering community questions, not responding to emails, this was not done. If you're, if, if you ask a board member a question at a board meeting, they should be able to respond to you. As, as Chris alluded, there was no discussion on where the learning loss money was going. I also spoke at the board meeting regarding learning loss. And so overall, we have to have major changes, and I feel like
Time is up.
provide that transparency. Thank you.
Kim, thank you. Leslie Long, same question?
Hi there. Last summer, we were all blindsided, and that is exactly why I'm sitting here today with Chris, Pete, and Kim. The current board doesn't even interact or answer emails. We get up and speak and questions aren't asked. Students get up and speak. Parents spill their hearts out, and their answers, their questions don't get answered. Trust has been lost, and this group, Kim, Chris, Pete, and myself, we will restore that trust. And just most recently, at the last board meeting, the order of the agenda was switched, which clearly is an issue with transparency. So again, it's a big problem. It's why we're all sitting here today. It opened up, you know, it, it exposed the issues on, on the board, and it's why we're all
Time is up.
Thank you very much, Leslie. Jim Schreierman, same question?
I want to speak about this issue in a post-COVID world, because we all hope and pray that we will be past COVID at the start of the next school year or shortly thereafter. This comes up in several ways. It's not just what happens at a board meeting or failure to respond to emails, although those are important issues. But understanding the board policies as to who has the responsibility and the duty to communicate to the public is absolutely essential. This board has been far too passive in allowing the administration to communicate unilaterally without board approval as to content with the public on matters that the board should be communicating with the public. It's right there in the school board policies. On citizens' committees, the administration set up a citizens' committee recently, and that is not an administration function. It is a board function to set up citizens' committees. So getting policies right and understanding policies are like the bylaws for a board of directors for
Time is up.
Thank you, Jim. Matthew Hackworth, same question?
I guess I'd ask how many of us were sitting around pre-COVID and asking, boy, if I could just get greater transparency and communication out of the administration and the school board, everything would be better. The truth is, those are symptomatic. Those desires right now are symptomatic of our frustration and the community's frustration with the lack of, our lack of confidence in the leadership and the decision-making that has taken place over the past year. So I think fixing that as the first and foremost issue and improving community's confidence in the decisions that are being made and the board's functioning would go a long way to tamping down this desire to know and the need to know every in and out of every communication. Yes, all the blocking and tackling that folks have mentioned needs to be done, responsiveness to community members and their inquiries, and, you know, engagement. It is great to see 410 participants on this Zoom call. Keep it up. Go to the board meetings. Understand what the policies are, as, as Jim just noted. Those are essential aspects of making sure that this community and this democracy is functioning in a healthy way. Thank you.
Matthew, thank you very much. Anna Maria Johnson, communication and transparency?
Thank you, John. Communication and transparency are so vital in our everyday roles, especially as we move into becoming school directors. These are issues we need to resolve by rebuilding trust with our community and education, and giving education to our community on proper board communication and who can answer emails. We have plans to bolster communication through town halls, common questions, and answers through our president's monthly report and teacher listening tours as board members. Communication is one of the most critical components to this role as a school director, and we will provide the temperament and leadership and listening skills that are needed to rebuild trust in our community.
Thank you, Anna Maria. Last panelist on this question, and then we're going to go to closing statements. Claire Guth, Claire?
Thank you. I have made a career out of solving problems in education and creating transparency in data. And as school director, I will ensure that district and board decision-making is done as transparently as possible, and that every community member has a voice that is heard, and every feeling, person has a feeling that they have a stake in the results. But I value policy and transparency, so I just wanted to address something that a couple candidates just mentioned. The district is using the minimum 20% of the APR SR3 funding for summer learning programming, which is free for families that qualify, but the remaining 80% is not going to fill a budget deficit. The district is actually mandated to use it for COVID remediation. This is outlined in Connor Lamb's wonderful letter, letter to the district. It's things like enhancing ventilation, supporting teacher burnout, and providing additional supportive services for the school year for youth.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that. Let me ask each of the panelists to address the audience here. Tell us why we should vote for you. We get four votes. There are 10 candidates. This is your opportunity in your closing statement to tell us why we should cast one of our four votes for you as a candidate for the Mount Lebanon School Board. And we begin with Peter Darcy. Pete?
Thanks, John. Let me just continue the discussion a little bit on transparency. About an hour ago, our slate on our website, Elect Friends of Lebo 2021, we just posted a position paper. And we think it's pretty comprehensive in terms of how Leslie, Kim, Chris, and I feel on a host of these issues. Some were discussed quickly tonight, some were not. Just like the last comment, I'd, I'd love to spend an hour just talking on learning loss and, and how we're prioritizing or not prioritizing learning loss that Claire was just talking about. Why us? Because this is about the students. This is about the community, and this is about our future. If you want productive outcomes, if you want leadership, and if you want to put an end to the games that have kind of plagued the Mount Lebanon School District for the last year and a half, these fine individuals that I'm running with are the path forward. Let's put an end and learn from our kids in terms of, let's stop these petty labels, some of these cheap attacks that we've heard this evening, and let's
Time is up.
on advancing the issues.
Peter Darcy, thank you very much, Pete. Chris Luff, same question to you.
I'd echo, yes, echo Pete's comments. Please go to our website, electfriendsoflebo2021.com. You, you'll see a full position paper in there. We'll be adding additional pieces to it over the next couple of days. You'll see a detailed analysis of our budget. Yes, we are in dire straits, but we do have the opportunity to fix it, and the reason is because of this board. This board is balanced with leadership in both public and private sector. We've got the leadership experience. We've got the, the, the problem-solving skills. We've got the creative thinking skills. Those are all critical to move this district forward. And, and every decision that we make, we put the student first. That's where we start, because if you start with a student and you go from there, you're going to come up with the best outcome for this system and this education that we're going to bring through all of our kids here in Mount Lebanon. Thank you.
Chris Luff, thank you very much. Andrew Freeman, last word from you.
Alrighty. Well, first off, thank you, John, for moderating, and thanks to the Dennis Theater Foundation, Legal Women Voters, and Mount Lebanon Public Library, again, for sponsoring tonight's forum. As, as many of you all know, I, I'm a graduate of Mount Lebanon and who decided ultimately to come back and to raise my family. Since I've been appointed to the board in October, as I reiterated recent, a, a little bit ago, you know, I've personally been the recipient of verbal and abuse from the community, particularly in the board meetings and outside of them as well. And the majority of those individuals really were supporters of my opponents. The experience that I had in the 90s that are the experiences that I never wanted my son to be exposed to or go through, or for any student in the district to go through. The One Lebo Team is all about building a better tomorrow. The One Lebo team is all about building a better tomorrow. I'm about building a better tomorrow. My vision as a school director isn't to duplicate the past, but is to prioritize the needs of all students. I want to ensure our district is a stable financial position, that we are fair and objective in evaluating our superintendent. We provide the right communication. Leadership that you can be proud of.
Thank you, Andrew. Kim Lackner Morrow, your closing statement?
Yes. Hello. Yeah, so I feel like our slate, we are, we are ready to work. We are, we are together as a group, as a team. I think we have, I think we have an awesome message that we can put forward and a plan. And as a 2001 Lebo grad, I received a quality education beyond measure because of inspirational educators at the high school like Ms. Walters and Mr. Darnardo and Ms. Davenport, who are still there. I think my experience specifically as a current, a current educator, I would be the only one on the board. I think that's invaluable with that experience. Like my slate mates have said, you start with the student first and you remove the politics. And I think that we have done that. I think some other things that we need to look at is having a diverse, diversity of ideas, healthy, meaningful discussions and transparent leadership that can lead to the needed change that we need. There needs to be structural changes regarding curriculum and leadership and opportunity for teacher led professional development that is relevant and meaningful because they need to have a voice as well. Open lines of communication between the union, the school board, and the administration, and then finally. And our slate can do that. Thank you.
Thank you, Kim. Appreciate it. Leslie Long, your closing statement?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. The Friends of Lebo team will bring much needed balance and experience to the school board. We bring something unique to the table. We came together organically as a group. We were not handpicked by a political party. And we are supported and funded by concerned community members. We believe our teachers are our greatest assets and we commit to putting students first. If you prefer the high road, vote for me, Chris, Pete, and Kim.
Leslie Long, thank you. Jim Schreierman?
Thanks to all who made this evening possible. Greatly appreciate it. I'm running for the Mount Lebanon School Board, not for a generic school board. And by that, I mean, I have studied for more than three years the issues and challenges that this school district faces. I bring a unique perspective and skill set as a former teacher of high school and college and as an attorney of 31 years who's now semi-retired and has the time to do this important civic task. I have worked with people from all backgrounds throughout my career as an educator and as an attorney. Men, women, black, white, every, every possible description on not just this continent, but other continents. I've been able to get along with people and solve problems with them and I would bring that perspective to the board if elected.
Jim Schreierman, thank you, sir, very much. Matthew Hackworth? Go ahead, Matthew.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate, again, everybody's making this possible here. I appreciate the Dennis Theater, the Mount Lebanon Library, and the Legal Women Voters. Thank you for this opportunity to, to hear from, from you or to, for the community to hear from us. I'd also like to, to note that, you know, I'm unaffiliated here, so I didn't find a slate, but I think you need to ask yourself as a voter, who do you want to represent you? I've got five children in this district. I'm invested in this community. Invested in the education that they'll receive and making sure that it's the best possible one that they and all of their peers receive. Do you want somebody to represent you who brings critical thinking skills, who brings experience with business, is able to work well with others and is able to, to represent the needs of the community? Fundamentally, that's what I seek to do in the position and to represent you well. And again, to bring the best education possible for our students and, and, and the community, to the community's benefit.
Matthew Hackworth, thank you. Thank you, sir. Anna Maria Johnson?
So in closing, I would like to note that we will bring our strong work ethic, dedication, ethical viewpoints with our ability to listen and work collaboratively, collaboratively to move our district forward with improved communication through calm and tactful leadership and to provide the best equitable education to our district while maintaining our standards of excellence and education in a progressive manner. I would like to close by mentioning that you are looking at the most diverse team of candidates in the history of Mount Lebanon School District and School Board. We were not handpicked by any party to run for office. Andrew, Claire, and I jumped in when we saw a need for a board director during the vacancy last fall. I appreciate this opportunity to be with you tonight. And I believe that my skills and diverse background will bring a fresh perspective to the board. Thank you.
Anna Maria Johnson, thank you. Claire Guth, closing statement?
We are running for school director because we have the temperament and the experience needed and necessary to bring our community together and collectively move forward. We all have really good ideas to improve communication, elevate voices, elevate youth voices, which are often forgotten despite being key stakeholder. Support our educators and our commitment to DEI and academic financial recovery and help our district emerge stronger from the COVID-19 pandemic. Our brains are wired to pay attention to bad news. The pandemic has only amplified this problem, but I believe it's important to have a positive attitude because it sets the tone for our community. I want you to vote for us because we have the experience and great ideas for the district to move forward. But I want you to vote for us because we're nice. We value empathy, humility, and integrity. And these are the core principles of servant leadership. This frame of mind unlocks potential creativity and sense of purpose for students, educators, and administrators. Let's build a better tomorrow.
Thank you very much, Claire Guth. Final closing statement comes from Erin Gensel. Erin?
So what makes a great school board director? Board directors should first be effective communicators and good listeners. I believe these are two of my greatest strengths and they will allow me to help create stronger connections between the administration, board, and stakeholders. Board members should also be strong in data-driven decision-making. With degrees in mathematics and education, this is a process that I will be able to successfully implement to set relevant goals, boost engagement, and define performance metrics. Finally, school board members must have the temperament to respond accordingly through challenging events. Leadership is an immense responsibility. The public actions and words of school board members impact the district and its image and integrity. One Lebo's strong values, character, respect for diverse opinions, and ability to empathize will serve us well on this team. Thank you, and we look forward to serving you and our community as school directors.
Erin Gensel, thank you very much. And ladies and gentlemen, that concludes this candidate's forum tonight. I want to thank each of the panelists for taking time to be with us this evening, for answering, I think, very issue-focused questions in a positive manner. That is very much appreciated. Let me also thank the Mount Lebanon Public Library and the League of Women Voters of Greater Pittsburgh for their help with the Dennis Theater Foundation in sponsoring this event. You can go to the league's website, vote411.org for information about all the candidates and information frankly about the ballot questions. We've got four of them statewide. We have another one here in Allegheny County, so five ballot questions. Any kind of information like that that you wish to get, you will find available at vote411.org. Again, my thanks to all those who helped us put this together and a special thank you to all the candidates for public office. This is not an easy job being a school board member. I think we saw that once again this evening. And I congratulate each of the candidates for spending time with us this evening. Have a good night, everybody.